Hello, everyone. Welcome to the November meeting of the City of Binghamton Planning Commission. My name is Nick Corcoran. I'm currently the chairman of this commission, which is comprised of local community members tasked with reviewing site plans and special use permits for consistency with the standards and criteria set forth in the City of Binghamton Code. Based on our total number of planning commission members, four members must be present to constitute a quorum. Tonight, it looks like we have five members, which means we do have a quorum and can proceed. But first off, let's do roll call. Mario De Polvio, Paul O'Brien, Joe D'Angelo, Chris Judgeeats.
Here I am, rocky like a hurricane.
Kelly Weiss is not going to be here tonight, and Manny Priest. All right, so that means we have six members. All right, so that does constitute a quorum, and we can proceed. So next item on the agenda is the approval of the October meeting minutes. Anybody see anything in those meeting minutes that needed to be revised? Chris?
Yes, um, we need to amend who was present at the meeting. That is not Brian Seacrest. So we need to have the minutes amended to reflect that it was Sharon who was present last month.
All right.
I have one item too, Nick.
Yep.
In the part where I brought up the comment about the parking garage with rust corrosion, um, the applicant didn't make a response. It states my concern. But I think for the record, it should state their response because it's left open. But I just said that when they they responded.
You want us to note the applicant's response to your comment about the parking garage?
This is an important issue with the collapse of parking garages at Brighton Johnson City at at Wilson Hospital. And the applicant, that they're taking due diligence and their design and looking at all that. That should be noted that they did that. And not that it's a responsibility of this group. But I would recommend that somewhere it receive an additional set of eyes when their prints are done in the design review. I mean, this, this is collapse in Florida of a building and the parking garage in Johnson City. So they're very thorough in their approach and their plans. But that should be noted that they did say they were going to do a, you know, review and whatever they said and recorded should be in there. Okay? Important.
All right. All right. So two amendments. Any other changes to the meeting minutes? And if not, is there a motion to approve? All right, motion by Paul. Second by Joe. All in favor? All right. All right, six in favor, zero opposed. All right. Next item on the agenda will be seeker determinations. All right, in this portion of our meeting, the planning commission will be reviewing documentation provided by applicants for the first time. Applicants will be called to the microphone where they will be asked to make a presentation describing their plans to the commission. Commission members may then ask questions of the applicant to clarify any items that are unclear. And after all questions have been answered, the commission will deliberate and then either set a public hearing date for the project or request additional information before proceeding. To all applicants that will be presenting tonight, we ask that you please state your name and address for our records before beginning your presentation and ask that any members of your team who will be speaking, please give their name and address for our public record. So tonight, our first seeker determination is for the applicant Fairview Recovery Services. The project address is 110 Fairview Ave. This is a site plan review for the construction of a 12,750 square foot building with 20 sleeping units on an existing social services campus in the R2, 1 and 2 unit dwelling district. Welcome.
Nick?
Chris?
Um, before the applicant begins, um, because I live within a very close geographic proximity to this project, I have been advised by Brian from Corporation Counsel when they came before the committee previously to abstain and refrain from discussions and votes.
Okay.
Um, so I will be doing that again. And if, and if your client has any questions about why, there's nothing nefarious here calling to Bob Joseph about, they can talk to us.
All right.
Yeah, refusing myself from Scott.
All right, Brian, just to avoid any confusion, we asked that when we're in person that anybody recusing goes and sits in the crowd for just to make sure it's clear of your role. Yeah. Um, Sarah, the, uh, the microphones are pretty tricky, so you got to get right up, right up to them so that everybody can hear. And, uh, is the, is it green?
Hi. Sarah Campbell, him and Howard Cantel representing the applicant. Have with me tonight, Ken Gay, Keystone Associates, and Patrick McGeeley, the executive director of Fairview Recovery. I still see all familiar faces, so I think I'll just back up a little and talk about the project. Um, this is a second application for the same programmatic project at, as you, you can see the location, this is on the existing campus of the of the recovery services, and this is an application for new construction of a building and demolition of another one. This is a facility for rehabilitation. It is not a crisis center, so I think it's very important to make that distinction right off the bat. Um, this is just a mission to continue Fairview's plan and existing treatment. But adding it at this campus to consolidate services and to provide a more complete opportunity for those seeking those services. As you can see, we, or maybe I shouldn't say as we can, you can see as, as you will note from the application, we have substantially revised the plan to geographically locate the new building within the parameters of the existing campus. So there's no expansion beyond um, the previous plan called for utilization of some vacant space to the north. And so we have listened to the neighbors and to your comments and to the staff's comments and brought the new building back down into the campus. It's sort of in the middle of the existing buildings and, um, you know, and surrounded by it. So there's a lot, um, a lot of thought was put into how we could achieve the goals um, on the site, which is not particularly flat. Um, and also answer some of the concerns that that were raised in the last uh, review of this project. Um, I think I'll just turn it over to Ken to just walk you through quick and then answer any questions that you might have.
As Sarah mentioned, uh, before we had the, the building up in this location, we still had an L configuration up here. We had a large parking area up there, it's kind of away with those in this proposal. No longer, we, we have people coming up class on 4th Street. They'll be entering the site. Parking is now located off of, off of Merritt Street. As Sarah mentioned, the existing building right here will be removed and our new building will be here, which is in form. So greatly reducing the, uh, footprint of the overall site. And, uh, addressing some of the concerns the, the neighbors had in regards to crap on class on the mountain. Uh, building's approximately the same size before, a little smaller. We've been able to consolidate some of the square footage down if we program the space. But it's Sarah mentioned, the program is still the same. Still a 20-bed facility, because right now around 12,750. We have parking on site of 55, uh, 51. 51 in the lower parking area. Uh, and then there are some parking that's up here. A couple of things we did address in this, uh, and it's in our application package is lighting. Uh, the owner has agreed to replace all the lighting that was causing the neighbor some concern, and there's cut sheets for that in your, your packages. And then we've also designated three locations here, here, and here that are designated smoking areas, because there's concern about the residents wandering the neighborhood smoking. So the owner has designated those three areas that designate, uh, smoking area.
I think that, um, again, when you go through your package, you'll see that there's a net increase in parking of about 29 spaces. That was also something that was raised in the previous go around, um, that employees were parking on the street, although that's not prohibited. We certainly wanted to discourage that, so we were able to squeeze in an additional 29 spaces. And uh, this is a completely supervised recovery program. There is no unescorted individuals walking around. Um, they are always in the presence of an employee. So, um, and focusing the, the building in the middle will really eliminate the need for, you know, anyone to go really anywhere else. All the services that they could possibly need will be, will surround the building. The parking, the driveway, I'm, I'm going to say this, but I could be wrong. I think the driveway is in the same location that it is now. So that traffic pattern, um, is not going to change. You'll, you'll see in one of the uh, attachments to our application that the volume of staff is very low. Um, there's, there's no suggestion that there would be any sort of a traffic problem in that area. And that is pretty much it. Um, I noticed on the staff report, um, that you'd like a landscaping plan. Obviously, that's something that we can do to take care of. Um, let's see what the other staff comments were. I, I note the comment about the five-foot landscape buffer around the parking areas, um, and that a fence or a dense screening be, be installed at the property line base and clap them. We certainly can modify the plan to address those comments.
Okay.
That's it. So we're just really asking for a, um, uh, seeker designation tonight and, uh, for you to follow public hearing for next month.
All right. All right, any questions or comments about the revised plan? All right. Seems like everyone appreciates the new location for the building.
I hope.
Just one clarification. So which building on that plane is, is still coming down? Okay, so it's shown gone. Okay. Okay. All right.
Some of the front times we won't sign, you know.
All right. All right. All right, well, if there's no other questions or comments, this would be the time to bring them up, though, not, not wait till the next meeting, so.
Yeah, if you do, no, you have my cover letter. If you have any questions or just I don't know what your process is, but run them through Tito, and we're happy to, we'd rather have, be prepared to answer your concerns or questions before that night.
Yeah.
That would be terrific.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that the planning commission should act as lead agency and that this is a seeker unlisted action. All right, so goodbye Manny, all in favor? All right, six in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the project at 5:20 at our December meeting.
Well, so second.
All right, second by Manny, all in favor? All right, six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll see you in December.
Have a nice Thanksgiving.
You too. All right. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it was five, five, nothing. All right, uh, next seeker determination is for the applicant Chabad House. The project address is 26 to 34 Wall Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the conversion of the ground floor of an existing office building into a place of worship in the C2 Downtown Business District. Welcome.
Hi, thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Uh, if you could state your name and address for our record, that'd be great.
Uh, my name is Rabbi Levy Slonim, L E V I Slonim. Uh, S L O N I M. And our, uh, parent main location of our organization is actually in Vestal. Um, and this is a satellite center and serving for the downtown area. Um, so I, I don't, you know, let me know what you'd like. Would you like me to just share about our plans and what we'd like to do? And if you have any questions, I want to be respectful of everyone's time, so whatever it is, uh, you know, any specific questions, but I guess I'll just share briefly about, uh, what we'd like to do.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, uh, we, uh, we've been, uh, in the area for 38 years. Servicing mainly the students, uh, Binghamton University, as well as local community members um, in the greater Boone County area. Like I said, that our, uh, our main location uh, is in Vestal. And with the development of Binghamton and downtown Binghamton and the, the uh, student complex and student housing, as we all know, over the last, uh, 10, 12 years. And there being a lot more of a concentration of students in the downtown area. Uh, we were receiving more of interest and requests to expand our services um, to the downtown area, to the, to the, the students and some community members living in this area, downtown as well as the west side of Binghamton as well. Um, what we do is we, uh, we do a number of different types of services. Obviously, I'm Jewish and we, we, we do religious services. Um, we do classes, we do philanthropy events. Um, we do social events. One-on-one counseling. Uh, we also have recreational opportunities for students to get involved in many different ways. And that's pretty much, we, we have, you know, we have services, we have meals for the Jewish traditional celebrations. Um, and we service the, the students in the community in that way. Um, so over the last seven, eight years, we've been doing more programming uh, in the downtown area for the concentrated students in this area. Four years ago, we leased our own space, um, which is at 60 Henry Street, um, which we're in currently, three and a half years ago. We're in our fourth year of the lease there. And it's just does not meet the needs that we have in many different ways. Um, and so we set out to, to look for a permanent uh, permanent option, permanent presence to be able to respond to the needs of the students. Um, and we, uh, came across this building, uh, the legal address, I believe, is 2634 Wall Street. And our intention, and I have here, uh, these plans, it's not quite as glamorous as the, the renderings that are traditionally presented, but um, this is what we have at this stage of what we'd like to do. And I'll, uh, I'll flip it because this is, this just shows you the, the entire area, the entire lot landscape. It has a nice big parking area. I think there's about 62 spaces there. Um, currently, it's used as an office building. Um, and our intention is to transform the first floor to be used for the different needs for our center, for our community center, and I'll whip it over. So this shows you, um, uh, uh, the landscape, the middle areas, the main area where we have those, uh, when the students are here. So this is really during the semesters, because it's a lot quieter during the breaks and during the summer. But, uh, we have the weekly uh, assembly area where we have the services, and then we have the, the, uh, the area where we have the meals, the celebrations every weekend. Um, and then there's different rooms throughout. There's a hospitality suites area for religious purposes. We don't use electronics or travel on the Sabbaths and the holidays. So when we have people visiting, that's where they would stay to be able to do that. We have a parsonage residential area as well. In there, and we have some, uh, we have a commercial kitchen, uh, um, a programming area, uh, classrooms, um, et cetera. That's pretty much the general landscape of the plan.
All right. Um, do you mind if I ask you what the outdoor area, uh, Sukkah space is?
Yes, yes. So the outdoor area basically, um, the idea was to create a space where students can do work, hang out in the months that there is nice weather, uh, which, uh, you know, this year we had a lot more of that than we expected. Um, so that's the main, uh, purpose of that area throughout the year is going to be for that. And the, the word Sukkah is actually a, that's a holiday that we have for eight days of the year when we have a, um, uh, sort of outdoor patio type of structure that we put up, a temporary structure, and we would have the meals out there, but like a few times, three or four times throughout that holiday. So, but the main usage of the space was, the idea was to have a nice little, uh, area. It's also right near the water. Um, so to have just, and that we thought also would give it a nicer presence and, uh, you know, to, to add, we, there's a few different ideas that we have that we can do with that seating space. You know, to have outdoor furniture, permanent outdoor furniture where students can hang out, study, learn, whatever it is they want to do. So that's, that's the, the plan for that space.
Cool. All right. All right, any questions? Chris?
Rabbi, one of the questions that was brought up in the staff report by the planning department was uh, updating the parking diagram to revise it to show compliant drive aisles and no stack spaces. Can that be done before the next public hearing?
Sure. I mean, I would want to know the specifications that you're looking for, but absolutely, we could, uh,
Can I refer that to Tito, who can give you what those parking specifics would be?
Sure. Yes.
All right, actually, following on Chris's, uh, comment, is the, the number of parking spaces that you show there, is that based on the number that you need for something, or that you were just maximizing the number of spaces you could get?
So we, we have, I believe, currently not not including the planned idea of the outdoor space, which will take probably four spaces or more. We have currently, there are technically up to 62 spaces in the whole area.
Okay.
I don't think we need that much, much practically. Um, and, 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 you know, I would want to see what we can do with meeting those specifications. Um, but no, I mean, ideally, our plan is just to have it for usage for people coming, you know, frequenting the center during the week. You know, and then we would have to see by code exactly what, what the minimum is that we need.
Okay. Did Tito, do we have any idea what the minimum would be for this?
There's actually no minimum in the C2 for an existing building. Um, so he, he has options.
Okay. All right, should be pretty easy, though.
Okay.
Um, all right, any other questions or comments? Uh, the, uh, planning staff did ask if there was, if it was possible to show bicycle parking somewhere on the site plan.
We can add that, sure.
Another easy add.
Yeah. But that's a good thing to have.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, scooter, day's day in angels.
Yeah, go crazy. All right. No other questions or comments? All right, I'll make a motion that this is a type two action under seeker. Uh, because it involves the reuse of an existing building and that no further environmental review is required. All right, second by Chris, all in favor? Uh, six in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for this project at 5:25 at our December meeting. All right, so goodbye Chris, all in favor? All right, six in favor, zero opposed. All right, so we'll see you back in December. If it's possible to revise the site plan before then, so we could see what the plan is for the parking lot, that'd be great. And, uh, we'll have a public hearing and hear what everybody has to say about the project.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you all again. Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
Okay. All right. Our next seeker determination is for the applicant FAS Construction. The project address is 45 Carroll Street and 20 to 24 Lyle Ave. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the construction of a five-story social services facility with 60 sleeping units and a childcare center in the R3 multi-unit dwelling district.
Welcome. Thank you so much. Good evening, commissioners. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to talk to you about the YWCA's proposed intergenerational campus, which will be located at 45 Carroll, utilizing 34 Carroll, 24, it's just me, 34 Lyle, 24 Lyle, and 20 and 22 Lyle Avenue. It's five properties altogether that the YWCA recently purchased. And our plan is to open what we're calling an intergenerational campus. It will comprise of 68 units of affordable housing coupled with a state-of-the-art childcare center. We are stakeholders in the Coalition for the Homeless of the Southern Tier and have been for many, many years. I must also add that the YWCA was incorporated in the city of Binghamton in 1892. And we've been here for 130 years providing safe housing for women. So we've had a few years of experience doing that. This current project is proposed due to a number of factors, but primarily the lack of affordable housing that's there now for the population we serve, the low to very low to no income. And this particular project will add 68 units of affordable housing for that population with a set aside of approximately 30% for domestic violence survivors within that campus. I have with me this evening, the architect. I have with me this evening, the architect for this project, Mr. Richard Vito. And he's a well-known architect in circles with homeless housing and supportive housing. Uh, people who's got plenty of experience. He's worked with me in the past with our building renovation project, and he's here tonight. To present. The architectural drawings for you to walk you through what it will look like. So I'm turning it over to Mr. Vito.
Good evening. Um. You have a small plans, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm, I I find them difficult to read, so I don't know. You guys would be able to see them. The site is. Um, at the corner of. Lyle and Carroll Street. Um, and comprises uh several lots. Include the um. The old Urban League building. And the rest of the lot. Pretty much vacant. Uh, that building proposed to these knowledge. We are. Uh, proposing to. Uh, gut and stripped down to the base structure of the Urban League building. And will reconstruct it for the predominantly all of the classrooms of the. Uh, Young Wonders Childcare Center. Um, build a new building. Uh, residential, uh, five stories high, uh, sixty eight units. Twenty four zero bedroom. Uh, thirty six one-bedroom apartments. And eight two-bedroom apartments. Uh, the. First floor of the new building will have um. Twenty one spaces of parking under the building and going into the rear yard. It will have. Uh, offices and support space for the residential units as well as tenant services. And we'll also have a portion of the uh. Lower, the lower floor will have a portion of the childcare center that will extend to uh Lyle Avenue. Um, the building is approximately. Uh, the residential building is around a little over forty three thousand square feet. The uh childcare center will be around eleven thousand square feet. There will be outdoor play areas for uh different children. Uh, they are. Uh, infants. Toddlers, preschool and after school uh classrooms. Not sure what else, but uh, that's pretty much it. If you. Go through the the plans that I provided, there was a partial, uh. After the site plan, there is a seller plan that shows a partial seller. Uh, the rest of the building is built on grade. The first floor shows the um. The offices and uh tenant spaces. Uh, to the left. Parking area in the middle and the first floor and of the childcare center. On the right side, and then the upper floor shows uh second floor of the childcare center. Uh, which is all classroom. And um. The typical floor plan of the residential unit. Um. That's pretty much it. And um. My name is Richard Vito, V I T T O. Uh, my company name is O C B Architect. We're located at four oh one Lafayette Street, New York, New York.
It looks like an excellent project. Uh, any questions, comments, start off with Chris?
Hi, Carol, um, one of the questions that was raised by the uh. Planning staff in their uh, their their staff project review was about the parking. Uh, there are twenty one spaces in the plan. Um, are those meant for staff? For the residents or both?
Predom- I'm sorry. Predominantly, the the residential, the the population of the residential, they don't really consider that they will. Need to use the parking.
Okay. If you are able to finalize that. Uh, M O U with Binghamton University for their incubator spots. Having that added to the documentation might be helpful if there are parking concerns about this project.
All right. Uh, do you need any variances for what you're planning?
We need a height variance currently where uh the height. Allowed in the district is forty five feet and the roof line is at forty nine foot four. Um, and. There is a, we need parking. Um, and. We do at the corner building, there is, if you look at the site plan, our our property. Kind of wrapped around the one corner building that is built full on the site. And we have partial side yard. On each side of that property, but not full. Back of the property, we find our building attaching to the existing. Doesn't interfere with any windows, but you know, the length, the base, where. Pretty much where the existing building was. We're taking advantage of that.
Gotcha. All right.
On completion of this project, would the Holly Street. Site close down?
No.
Okay, it operate at both of them.
How can you move out? For eight months. So located on the Carroll Street. Utilized street level from our building currently. For additional housing.
This is to supplement, not to replace. The the facility currently at Holly. Okay.
Okay. All right. Um, just to make sure you're aware, uh, the applicant will need a uh quad review, um, commission. Uh, on architecture and urban design. Are you guys, you're aware of that and? Okay, so. All right, and you're already on the zoning board's agenda for. Coming up soon or next month? Okay. All right. All right. In total, uh, about how many, are you over the acre of disturbance that would require a stormwater plan or you're well under that? It's a little hard to tell. Okay.
Think we're, we're well below, we're well below.
Okay. All right. Excellent. All right. Any other questions or concerns? All right. Uh, Tito, just a question for you. What is um? We don't often see a type one action. What does that do for the review process?
That means it's it's coordinated review, so you guys declare yourself lead agency. The zoning board will defer to you all. Um, they won't be able to vote on the variances until until this commission concludes seeker. Um. But that's pretty much it. It's it's the seeker becomes coordinated and and the C B A has to wait for you all to. To conclude seeker before they can act.
Okay. All right. Um, I'll make a motion that the applicant's project. Is a type one action under seeker. Um. Because the proposal involves the construction of more than fifty units, which exceeds twenty five percent of any threshold in. The section occurring wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to any publicly owned or operated parkland. Recreation area or designated open space. Uh, including any site on the register of national historic landmarks pursuant to thirty six C F R part sixty two. Which is type one action, so type one action under seeker and that the planning commission should act as lead agency for review. All right, second by Paul, all in favor? All right, six in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the project. At five thirty. At our December meeting. Second by Paul again, all in favor? All right, six in favor, zero opposed. All right, so we'll see you back in December.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Hopefully it won't be snowing.
All right, our last secret determination tonight is for the applicant James Slocum. Project address is fifty nine Court Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the conversion of the upper seven floors of an existing office building into fifty seven dwelling units with seventy six total bedrooms. In the C two downtown business district.
Good evening, uh, James Slocum, seven, Marion Court, Binghamton. I'm here tonight, uh, seeking a site plan review and a special use permit for. Uh, fifty nine to sixty one Court Street. Uh, our plan is to uh redevelop that building in three phases. Um, when totally complete. Uh, to have sixty six units and eighty seven bedrooms. Um. Composed of one, two, and three-bedroom uh units.
All right, pretty straightforward.
That's it.
All right. Chris?
Hi.
Right.
So sixty six units.
Yeah.
And how many bedrooms?
Uh, eighty seven total.
And how many parking spots?
Uh, there's zero.
Okay. You do realize that that's going to be a concern because parking downtown is already a nightmare.
Yes, I I do realize that. And uh, we're going to work with the local garages, um, that to try and get parking where we can. Uh, however, we are limiting the size of the units to. Um, one, two, and three-bedroom units. Uh. Because, you know, lowers the 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 need for parking and. Um, isn't required. Parking isn't required in the C two district for. Um. One, two, and three-bedroom units.
And Tito's at, what what are the parking rules?
That that's correct. It's an existing building. If it's three beds or less, it doesn't require. Uh, parking. If it's four beds or greater, it requires parking onsite.
Okay.
Just sticking with that line of questions, uh. What are you thinking for parking? I can't imagine. Well, maybe are there a lot of people looking for apartments and they just legit don't have a car, or they would be looking for. Apartment that came with a parking space?
Yes, there's a lot of people that are are looking for apartments downtown, um, and and you know, to be totally honest, it it's. Uh, not a whole lot different than running to uh offices, the same. Um, you know, a similar amount of people require parking uh to get to or from work as well. Um, what we've. What we uh believe is is. That a lot of the offices aren't going to uh. Make a full comeback after COVID. Uh, we're finding a lot of that. Uh, we have a. Some current uh. Uh, commercial tenants in there that in no way, shape, or form, uh, are we planning on pushing out, but. Um, you know, a lot of the existing ones have. Already converted their office into kind of a satellite office or a uh meeting spot, uh, which. Leads us to believe that uh they may not renew. Um, you know, that on top of the uh existing uh. Several floors that have have been vacant for a number of years already. Um, you know, we think that. Uh, the best use for it would be. Uh, to convert it into apartments.
Okay. Do the commercial tenants, do they have parking spaces assigned to them as part of that building or?
They do not. They use the parking ramps.
Okay. Okay.
Project itself, uh, the building is eight stories. Um. This is for the uh. Redevelopment of the upper seven. Uh, it'll be done. As I said, in in several different phases. Um, as uh, uh, space open opens up and allows for it.
Gotcha.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, phase one would be composed of floors six, seven, and eight. Uh, which have a a. Much smaller uh footprint than floors one through four. Uh, and that would consist of eighteen units and and twenty four bedrooms. Hold on.
This isn't really relevant. I'm just curious. I I was noticing that the one-bedroom apartments are. They're pretty just stark, because it's a room for a bed and a couch and then a little kitchenette and a bathroom, and then that's pretty much it. Are you, is there a lot of demand for that small-sized apartment right now or?
Uh, there, there's a ton of demand for that. We are making some modifications that has uh. Needed the. Make them a little bit more uh. You know. Kind of long for, long-term oriented. Uh, you know, I I think that. Whether the demand is there for um something like that. Uh, our goal is to get. Um, you know, lease renewals and and longer-term tenants, and I I think that. Um. Adding some additional space may take. adding some additional space may take away a bedroom or two from uh, what we're coming here and asking for tonight, but may pay off in in the long run.
Okay. All right.
So your your goal is not to be exclusively student house?
No, no. So I mean, we do a lot of student housing. We do a lot of housing for for locals as well. Um, you know, I I think that the one, two, and three bedroom units, uh, specifically the one and two bedroom units are very much, uh, interchangeable between, uh, students and young professionals.
I I I'm curious how many young professors would want to rent a fourteen by fourteen studio, but I'll defer to the real estate market on that.
All right. And on the the plans, it doesn't look like there's any communal space planned, no gym or, uh, study area or?
There, there is amenity space on the second floor.
Second.
There, there's a section of the second floor uh, on the west side where butts up to an existing building. And there's no window there. So that's where we're going to, uh, locate the amenity space for the building.
On the, on the second floor?
Uh, yes.
That was labeled workspace on the north side of the building.
This is the, uh, proposed floor plan for the second floor. Uh, this is the the west side of the building, uh, that that butts up to and and is um, blocked from having any windows with the, uh, building next door. So we are going to take the majority of the section on the west side of the second floor and, uh, make that amenity space for the building.
Okay. I I think the plans we have done.
My plans are A one O one. You may not have the two O one plans.
A one O one, I believe, is maybe the existing that the two hundred would be the proposed.
Yeah, our proposed second floor plan, uh, which is what the planning commissioners have seen shows apartments on that west side.
Okay. I will make sure to get you a, uh, updated version.
Okay. And I'm sorry if you covered this. What what were your thoughts about what that communal space would be? It's just the study area or a?
Uh, no, I mean, definitely, uh, laundry facility.
Okay.
Um, potentially a small gym.
Okay.
But, uh, those are 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 top two, and we'll see how much room we have left after that.
Not a party room?
No party room.
All right. All right. Any other questions, concerns? A lot of units. All right. If there's no other questions or comments, I'll make a motion that the proposal involves reuse of an existing commercial building, which is a type two action under seeker uh, and that no further environmental review is required. Uh, seconded by Joe, all in favor? All right. Six in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the meet, uh, for this project at five thirty five at our December meeting. All right. Second by Paul, all in favor? All right. Six in favor, zero opposed. All right. We'll see you in December.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. That concludes seeker determinations. We'll move on to public hearings and final deliberations. Uh, in this portion of our meeting, we'll be holding open public hearings to obtain public opinion in regard to specific projects that are up for review. Applicants will be asked to come to the microphone and make a brief presentation describing their project. For most projects, this is the second time we were reviewing your information. So it would be very helpful if you could please give us a brief overview of your project to remind us what you're planning and then clearly identify any changes that have been made since the last time we saw you. When the applicant is done presenting and any clarifications have been reviewed, we will open the public hearing and allow members of the community to speak about the applicant's proposal. After the commission has heard from all community members interested in speaking tonight, the public hearing will be closed and the commission will deliberate. Uh, to our applicants, when your project name is called, please come to the microphone and start off by giving the name and address of any members of the applicant's team that's planning to speak. And to anyone from the community that will be speaking in regard to a project tonight, please also start off by stating your name and address for our records. Uh, just for anyone unfamiliar with the form, uh, format of a public hearing, we'll be opening the microphone to solicit public comment about a specific projects that are up for review. Uh, public comments should be directed to members of the planning commission and staff and not directed towards the applicant directly. Uh, it's not acceptable for any member of the public to enter into any form of discussion with the applicant directly during the meeting. Uh, the commission members will take note of any specific questions or comments that come up during the public comment portion of the meeting. And when there are no additional community members wishing to speak about the project, the public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed and the applicant will be given a chance to respond. The commission members will ask the applicant to comment on any questions that were brought up by the community if they are relevant to our review. Uh, it'll again not be acceptable for any member of the public to empty to attempt to enter into a dialogue with the applicant while they respond to questions or comments that arose during the public hearing. All right. So our first public hearing tonight is for the applicant Stonebridge Campus Living. Project address is two twenty one Washington Street. This is a site plan modification to add basement social assembly space to multi unit dwelling with twelve existing units and forty five total bedrooms in the C two downtown business district. Uh, is there anyone here from Stonebridge Campus Living?
Hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Martin Miranda. An attorney tour Barone in Albany, New York at three one three Hamilton Street. I provided everyone with a business card. If anyone else needs a business card, please let me know. This is regarding the basement amenity space at two twenty one Washington Street for Stonebridge, my client. Um, just to give a brief overview, uh, this is a a fairly large space, approximately thirty six hundred square feet. Has a lot of potential. And, uh, there's multiple potential uses that can be, uh, developed with this space. Uh, currently, there's already laundry in that area and a gym space. Uh, there was a recreational space that is no longer being used. And, uh, we would like to continue to use that for a partial recreational space as well as a study space. And we just want to impress upon, uh, the commission and the public. Um, we've heard the concerns from the last hearing. And we, uh, wanna express that there's new ownership for this building and they want to convey that they are responsible proactive owners. And they want to really deter any of the problems that haven't expressed through monitoring and increased presence and, uh, really try to change the perception of how this space is used and how this building generally interacts with the community. Um, so if anybody has any specific questions, I'd be happy to address those from the commission. Um, I do, I realize that the county has recently, uh, provided their view on the project and have not stated any, um, significant impacts to the community.
All right. Chris?
Two questions. Um, you mentioned new ownership? How long has, um, Stonebridge Campus Living been in been an owner of the two twenty one Washington Street project?
Um, August of twenty twenty one. So we took over in August and then the condemnation happened in February.
Okay. So at least something else for this entire school year so far.
I think that's, that's correct.
Okay. Um, second question, I know for many of us, a significant issue is the official letter from the chief of police expressing his uncomfortableness, if that's the right word, with this project. Have you guys met with the Binghamton PD to address their concerns? Uh, because I'm not seeing any new letters from them.
Correct. We have been in correspondence with the police department and, uh, tried to engage with them. We have not received any response and we don't think that that should be construed as something in the negative. And we do reviewing their letter, I do understand their viewpoint in having to, uh, police. And from what I can tell is their letter basically explains that it's hard for them to do their job and monitor what's going on inside the building. Yet you have members of the community and in particular, uh, the owners at two seventeen, two nineteen who went at length about problems going on outside of the building. So really, it does. It does feel that, uh, you're getting negative feedback from police who are just trying to do their job and I can understand their concerns. And you're getting some kind of broad sweeping claims about activities that are going on in the street. Well, there isn't a common space in this building right now. And uh, based on my, uh, just listening to the commission and hearing that amenity spaces are desired, maybe perhaps based on the fifty nine park project. Um, I don't think this is a problem with the space per se. It may make policing a little more difficult as any, uh, interior space, but uh, c- community spaces, common spaces in buildings do foster uh, healthy environments when they're done, when they're managed correctly. And when you have, uh, correct procedures in place to make sure that students are uh, connecting themselves appropriately. And I think that's what this owner owner is trying to, uh, express through their, uh, measures that they would like to take, uh, upon the commission's approval.
And if I can just interrupt for a second on behalf of corporation counsel, we advise both the applicant and the police chief, as is our common practice, that those, uh, two entities uh, should not communicate about the project while pending before the commission. Um, so that should not be construed against the applicant. And the police chief, whether or not it's this project, just for the applicant's information, as well as corporation counsel always cite safety concerns associated with any basement or underground uh, social space. And that includes in our state liquor authority applications. So that might be a proper ground to consider, but not the lack of communication between the police chief and the applicant.
All right. So what do you think? Is there a solution to make it so that the site plan or the plan that we see in front of us that we could feel comfortable approving? Uh, could not host a hundred and twenty students drunkenly partying in the basement? Is there a way you could break up that space, throw up a wall somewhere that makes it so that just you couldn't physically do it?
Uh, absolutely. Um, I visited the space prior to this meeting and discussed with the owner about the potential of this space. And, uh, because there are multiple uses that can be, um, uh, that can be comprised in the space that through, uh, partitioning of the space, it can be done in a way that I really think adds, uh, a lot of potential value, uh, for the experience of those students, um, both recreational and educational. Um, also our owners don't want what has been construed as night club activity going on in this basement. I don't think anybody wants that. Um, again, I I think the concern is the lack of regulation of the activity that's going on in in this space. And the owners doing everything that they think, uh, a responsible owner should do and monitoring that space. And some of the proposals that have been laid forth in our recent letters, such as, uh, video cameras in the basement, there's already been a camera installed in the lobby of this building now that monitors who's coming in and out of the building as well as who there's the basement access right there. So you can see who's going into the basement. There's, there's other entrances and exits, of course, and those would also be monitored through cameras, keyless, keep key fobs and um, locks and more secure locks. And, um, if there is in criminal inappropriate behavior going on at this building, certainly the owner would like to be aware of that. And when wouldn't want to hear about it, uh, in this venue from a neighbor and would be very, uh, willing to work with their neighbors and respond to any additional recommendations or feedback from neighbors and the police to make sure that this is an appropriate space for, uh, young students.
Okay. All right. So right now we still have in front of us a plan that shows a a giant open area. It's even labeled open area. Would you be willing to submit a new plan that just breaks it up? I mean, sometimes the things that get alleviate our concerns are plans that show gym equipment in a certain area, or if you're planning to put TVs on the wall that so it has a specifically designed use or function. Furniture layout, if you're gonna put furniture in there. It's also something that the planning department can use in the future. So potentially the person that owns the building now may not be the same person a year from now. And if it's left as an open area, we could have the same problem with the new owner because maybe they won't care about what's going on there. But if we have a site plan that shows how it was supposed to be broken up um, and the new owner tears down those walls and then there's a police call, they'd be in violation of their approved plan. And then we have at least some standing to go after them. So is that something you'd be willing to submit?
Yeah, I think that's a very reasonable request. Um, if we haven't submitted anything of that nature and you need more specific detail, we we can certainly provide that. And, uh, we feel confident that, you know, a lot of these small changes will make a big difference with this building and um, really change the attitude and, uh, perception of what's, uh, uh, from the students who live there and also the neighbors who live who who live next to them.
Okay. All right. So you're willing to do that? All right. Well, I was just reminded that I think we have a public hearing to, uh, to do for this to see if anybody wants to speak about it. But it was probably good to cover that before we open the public hearing because it sounds like you're headed in a direction that some people might be happy with. Um, so from my memory, we left the public hearing open last time.
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay. All right. So this is a continuation of the public hearing from the last meeting. Um, so we'll ask you guys to sit off to the side and we'll open the microphone. Uh, so this is a public hearing for the applicant Stonebridge Campus Living. The project address is two twenty one Washington Street. This is a site plan ma- modification to add basement social slash assembly space to multi unit dwelling with twelve existing units and forty five total bedrooms in the C two downtown business district. Uh, if there's anyone who would like to speak about the project, uh, please come to the microphone. Yep. Come on down.
Hi. Good evening. Uh, my name is Thomas Marczewski. Uh, that's M A R C Z E W S K I. I live at, uh, two seventeen Washington Street. And, um, I've been a resident there for about four years now. I can, uh, uh, all matters aside of perception and attitude. Um, our hypothetical, uh, what I have seen and experienced is not hypothetical. They're not perceptions. They're not attitudes. Uh, they, this building has been used as a party house. And, um, it's rented out to students who like to party. And they party hard. And that space um, recreational study, they are not watching Alfred Hitchcock movies and analyzing the cinematography. This is not going to happen. This is not what these students are interested using the space for. And, um, I have seen things I don't want to describe. I just want to say that I really, really want to make sure that these aren't perceptions. These aren't, oh, they just think they have a misperception that this will go away. Um, that's all I have to say, honestly. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, anyone else who would like to speak about the project?
Hello?
Welcome back.
Welcome. Thank you for having us again. Uh, I just want to show our faces one more time and, uh, appeal to the all the commissioners to, uh, make the right choice and, uh, listen to what we have to say and, uh, refer to all the Listen to what we have to say and refer to all the documents that we have, uh. Submitted previously, so, uh. Also, uh. There's a, sorry, if there's a proposal to change the space or change, uh, or, uh. How would I phrase this? To use it in a different manner than, than it was used so far, uh. Is there a way for them to guarantee that, that there will be no alcohol use in that space because, uh, I, uh. Operate a similar establishment, but I also answer to New York State Liquor Authority. And, uh, also New York State Police and everybody else that wants to come in. So, uh. It's one of my concerns.
Alright.
But I appreciate your time and, uh, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Some excellent question. Uh, alright, anybody else? Here to speak about the project? Alright. Seeing no one else, we will close the public hearing. You guys come back up. Alright, a couple of, uh. Couple of statements there and then a few from the last meeting, but, um, alright, so you're running a party house. Do you wanna? Respond to that or?
Uh, yes, uh, this, this building has a history of that activity. And that's something that this owner is trying to change through some of these mechanisms and measures again. Uh, some of the ideas that have been proposed by the applicant has been designed to deter some of that activity and to also monitor and document. Any inappropriate activity. In the event that something like that does happen. But I don't think that the space per se is promoting that sort of activity and. Uh, this is, this problem of underage drinking, I think is a problem of all college campuses beyond a specific building.
Okay. Can you just go over one more time the, the monitoring and deterring methods? That are in the rest of the building, not, not specifically this spot, like. We've already kind of heard about that and the cameras at the entrances, but is there, there's other stuff that's happening in the building to combat this or?
Well, the, the tenants are, are aware of. Uh. The community feedback.
Okay.
Uh, the fact that I am now involved, um. They don't want to lose the space and they like the fact that this could be. Really a potentially great space for them to use and. I think it'd be fundamentally unfair to deny them that opportunity to have this space. Um, now with those. Those measures in place such as better security, better monitoring of who's coming in and out. Cameras. I, I think we all agree that when we're on camera. You behave differently because we know that you can be caught if we do something wrong. And I think that that would have a significant impact, significant impact. And again, using the space for a multipurpose. Uh, venue, uh, for working out, for studying, for watching movies. For hanging out and using it as a recreational basis as well. That really does kind of, you know, change. What the space. Is essentially, uh, it really does and, uh, looking at today, I went down there today, it's, it's an empty room. And it looked like there had been some parties down there, well. When you have it, again, I think if you subscribe to, you know, these broken window theories or just changing the. The perception of a space through better accommodations and through better ownership and management, that's how communities. Turn things around and also listening to their neighbors and if there are problems. Concrete problems, those can be addressed. Uh, again, uh. Without those specific examples. You know, it's really hard to speak in the abstract, but, uh, the owner does want to be proactive and listen to this commission and listen to the neighbors on what. Reasonable things can be done. To make sure that this space is, uh. It is, is a good space for this group and also, uh, provides a healthy learning environment.
Okay. Alright, and then there was a, oh, go ahead.
One final comment from that client, um, yeah, they've been, since this space has been condemned. They've been just on this right point of regulation, they've. While there's laundry in the building, just so, just to demonstrate how important it is to make sure that these, uh. The students understand that they're being monitored and regulated. They can't use the laundry space outside of regular business hours, so if they're working, studying late, if they're not getting their laundry done on time. And they want to do laundry in the middle of the night, as I may have been guilty of as a college student, they don't have that option right now. They have to, uh, use that space under regular business hours, nobody's allowed in that space right now. Outside of, uh, normal business hours and there will be a regulated hour. Regulated hours at some point, once this space is, uh, approved and used.
Okay. Alright.
So we hope that, we hope that just general regulation, general monitoring would help ease some of the concerns, um. Of the community on this commission despite some of the. Past history of the building, again, we are trying to be forward thinking and, and this in our approach.
Okay. Um, and there was one other comment about, um, monitoring alcohol use in the space.
I think that's, again, I think that's a problem with any environment, whether it's a bar, whether it's a hotel, whether it's a dorm room. And, uh. How do you, how do you prevent that? Again, through monitoring, through deterrence, through being a proactive, responsible. Uh, owner and by keeping the space in a condition that makes people want to live there rather than party there.
Okay. Alright.
I'm sorry, just a, a question to follow up on that. When you say monitoring. Uh, is there any information you want to provide the commission with what proactive monitoring means to the applicant? For example. Is it a? House marm, is it a video camera? Um, what are the types of monitoring that you mean?
Uh, certainly, um. What I was thinking of and please let me know if I, if I miss anything, um. In terms of proactive monitoring is this twenty-four seven closed circuit camera. With, uh, oh, I think there's a seven day, I believe there will be a seven, seven day, um, tape. Record to go back and again, if there's an issue, we can look and see what happened. Currently, oh, I'm sorry.
Do if that's the case, uh, since you're gonna submit a revised site plan with some of the furniture or televisions or whatever else. Uh, you, you're, you're planning on using for the space, may want to also indicate the location of those cameras, whether or not they're external. Or also internal on, on that basement space that we're talking about.
Uh, correct, there, there'll be internal and there is al- already an external camera in the lobby.
I would just show it on the site plan since you're doing it, just so the commission gets the full, full gist of, uh, how you're updating that space.
Absolutely.
Will there be a twenty-four hour dedicated security team keeping an eye on that?
I don't think so, I don't think that they're gonna, yeah, perhaps a staff or anything like that, I think that would. Uh, that's just not something that's been discussed, um. But I don't, we don't think that that would be necessary at this time, um, again, with the. Current monitoring of activity that's with regulating how the laundry space is being used. Once you partition this space, so it isn't an empty room. Um, and once you have cameras inside that space. I, I really think that that sends a message to anyone in that space that it's designed for certain. Activities that are appropriate that and, and not. They're not interested in continuing the activity that may have caused some of the issues previously.
How about, uh, comment about, you, you've owned it for just over a year? Um, any, any idea of the history of, uh, police? Calls to the building or any issues with. That are required police to be, uh, called in.
Uh, yes, I've, I've spoken with my client about that, um, because I, I've listened to a lot of the concerns from the, from the last hearing. And I wanted to understand, I've seen some of the, um. Correspondences that we've tried to have with the, the police department. My understanding is the only police issues that have. Transpired, uh, relate to noise. Um, yeah, and I, and I assume that that had to do with, again, parties after hours, which is something that we're trying to stop with. Some of our measures, but there's. I've been told that the last time was in February. Um. Yeah, the, 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 this, the area has been condemned since February. And also the, this, just by the way, um, I believe the, the basement was condemned not for the partying, but because. There was a problem with, uh, the first floor support beams and. An inspector needed to have a visual inspection of those by going into the basement. And realized that the basement was out, was violating code and without a certificate of occupancy. And so it wasn't that there was some, um, horrible thing that had happened that caused, uh, the basement to be condemned, it's just there's been, uh, some. History of complaints from some of the neighbors, uh, but nothing recently, I've heard some pretty, uh. Serious allegations being made about what has happened, uh, near this building or. From tenants of this building, I don't know if that is, um, actually the case. If, if you can tie this building to some of those activities. Um, cause I've been, I've heard references to kind of larger events such as SantaCon and. Uh, this pub crawl and I believe there was a, a young lady who, um. Ended up in then, uh, somewhere, uh, and so. I don't think that she was a tenant there, she, maybe she was attending, we don't know, but, uh, the neighbors who have. Raised these issues, um. Again, that, I think it's just this perception concern that continues to be raised. Without concrete examples, but if there are concrete examples tied to the tenants of this building. This owner is going to be very proactive in making sure that any bad apples do not cause. Systemic problems with the community or with the building.
Alright. Yeah. Yeah, Mario was just pointing out that, uh, we do, we. Well, if everybody's in agreement, we do need to see a revised plan before we can make a decision anyway, so. We're probably gonna table this until the next meeting. Um. Anybody have any other questions, comments, concerns now though?
Apologies, a, a couple of years ago, we had, I think, I think a couple of years ago before this group. Um. A group came in to propose a project at the corner of State and Court was a hookah bar and it was in the basement. And there was a, um, very long. Um, review by the fire marshal and the police department. And I think in the end that project did not go forward, I, I don't remember if we, what our vote was, but. Any, my view of. A project. That would be in a basement is all about safety. The issues of what the, the perceptions or. The, um, what people actually saw at night and in parties. I, I can't personally agree or disagree because I wasn't there to see anything, but I do know is, um. Perhaps Dylan would remember from other experiences working with him, I do know. Codes and standards a bit and I would be extremely concerned about any public use of a building in a basement. If. Building on what Nick is saying about dividing the space up. If this were on the first or first floor of the building where there were windows with fire escapes. Then it's a different issue, but any group of fifty or a hundred people in the basement. Um, and they, the hookah bar, I think had two or three exits, but still. Raised, and again, if I'm wrong, um, correct me, raised a lot of concerns from the fire marshal. So if that would be, um, I would have to be convinced at length. That anything that you propose has been screened through every possible city agency that's responsible for code review. And I, I, I will offer no votes either way until that's done.
Okay.
I can't pass any judgment without knowing the experts that looked at the fire codes and progress code and other.
Okay.
That's my.
Yeah. Gotcha.
I appreciate the applicant coming here and going to bat for her tenants. Um, but this is the second month in a row that you've had a public meeting. Uh, open to the public, public comment and not one of your tenants has bothered to show up. And you've repeatedly said how important this is to them. I am much more swayed by your neighbors who've taken time out of their busy schedules. To come down and voice therapy. Just food for thought.
Alright. Yes, Chris.
I certainly don't want to dissuade the applicant from submitting. A revised plan, if that's what you're desiring. But I'm gonna make one. Observation. If corporation councils advise both you as the applicant and the police chief, you can't discuss this project any further while it's on the docket. If that, if this project is pulled and you plan to resubmit it in four months or six months. But in the meantime, while there's nothing before the planning commission or the city. Could you work with the police department to potentially answer their questions or concerns?
From, as a general matter, and, and this is gonna sound very lawyerly, okay, so please forgive me. I, I typically advise the police chief to have as few conversations with applicants or potential applicants. As possible, uh, as I think the commissioner eloquently stated, the fire marshal, office of code enforcement. Those departments that have jurisdiction over the, uh, actual structure of a building are far better to address prospective. Safety concerns, the chief can speak to a police record that existed in the past, but not necessarily to how it exists in the future. Um, so again, um, I can speak with Brian and see if he will agree with me about that. Um, but I would typically advise police chief Zakuski, uh, not to only comment on documented crimes. And then potential safety risks, uh, as associated with like a basement space as we would, would in an S L A application. Uh, and to speak very generally about that structure, not specifically about a particular project, if that makes sense.
It does, so here's my question, how did the applicants get this letter to go away? That, or is, is, is the correct answer, if it's in the basement, the letter is never gonna go away?
I think.
We shouldn't, we shouldn't, we shouldn't lead the applicant on that. Dance around for six months with a, a, if Zakuski's letter will never go away, if it's a question of, the police will always object. To a basement assembly space, we should make that clear to the applicant so they don't waste their high-priced attorney's valuable time.
Wow.
Does that make sense?
It does, with all due respect to the, to the applicant and, and to this commission. I think some of the concerns that were raised by the commission and the applicant's ideas about how to enhance safety measures. At property, right, might influence the chief's perspective on the level of safety risk. I would never portend to speak for the chief. If that answers your question.
It does. My second thought is this. You have neighbors who've spoken out. Two months in a row and I want to be very fair. But whether it's you as the owner or your tenants are not good neighbors right now. It might be in your interest to. Be a better neighbor for a few months, so these people are happier. And not coming to meetings expressing these concerns, if you had a track record of being a good neighbor over a course of months or a year. It might influence how we view these concerns. If that perception goes away, everybody's like, wow, these people that under new ownership are great. Cause right now, there's sort of a sour taste over on Washington Street.
Alright.
May I may I address any any other?
Yeah, you can say whatever you want, yeah.
Okay. I I'm not sure that that some of the concerns raised by the neighbors are are recent concerns, I think some of them may date back to years prior. And if there are specific concerns that have occurred recently, I'd certainly like to be made aware of that as well as the applicant to try to address those concerns. Cause we do want to make a change immediately and part of this process is. Making concrete changes to this space and to. The gentleman to your left regarding the hookah bar, I think. Basements present challenges, no doubt. I think the only difference that would raise with this particular space is that it's not a commercial space, it's not for public use. It's not going to be used as a party house, a nightclub or anything of that nature, and there's going to be. Measures taken and implemented and have already been implemented to make sure that doesn't happen. And if safety is the primary concern. I think that's valid and we will continue to work with the agencies, the fire department. I'm not sure the fire department is able to provide an opinion on the space until it is approved. But we will continue to work with them between now and the next hearing to try to get some of that. Well, I'll also speak with the applicant about whether or not some of the tenants can come down so that they can explain why this space is also important. I think that that would be helpful to this commission as well. There are three exits currently, my understanding that there aren't any real code violations, other than it cannot be occupied. And. If there are any other. Safety monitoring deterrent mechanisms that haven't been mentioned. That this commission would like to include in any potential see in in a potential new site. Proposal, or if there's any concerns that were expressed from the public generally that you would like to see included. I think the owner would be very open and accommodating to present that so that this commission could have the all the information possible. To make a fair ruling and all we're asking is for is is that the process proceed in a fair fashion.
Okay. Alright, in the interest of not wasting the applicant's time. Is a revised plan worth? Them completing or can we give them an answer now? For me, a revised plan certainly would be worth. I would potentially change my mind seeing a revised plans.
If at least one of you would be influenced by seeing a revised plan, our advice would be to get the revised plan prior to voting. So that it it appears and meaningfully as this councils do, this commission is due to liberation.
Okay. Alright. Joe, yeah.
Build on that, what level of revised plan? What what level of revised plan is generally required? I know the scale of the drawing, should it show the exits and egress and. Spring through system, if any, I I don't know, I'm referring that to. What's what's required and.
It can be a similar plan, it should be drawn to scale, have dimension, show ingress and egress of the space. Sharon recommended that it just show camera locations. And then one thing that that the planning department would like to see is that if if the space is going to be separated into different uses. That there be actual physical partitions so that no one room can host. A large occupancy, because we've had issues in the past where a floor plan will show. Labels for different types of uses on a space, but it's still one large open space and then that becomes a party room in the future, so. We would just ask that the different uses be physically partitioned.
Again, just excuse my ignorance about the building, is there a heating or cooling boiler in the basement? Is there any heating or cooling boilers in the basement or utilities, natural gas that might require firewalls? Or any any separation from a space?
I do know that on the left-hand side, I don't know if it's on that first sketch, there is a firewall in storage. On the other side, only we have access to to all of that material and then for the units on the floors above, they have all their own on their own floors.
Okay. That that's the kind of thing that might be on a drawing. That might help me review if you're not in a somewhere spaced. Million BTU gas.
Alright. Alright. So it sounds like we're gonna table this, you would get the opportunity to resubmit new plans. Just as a point of order, so the public hearing, we closed it, but we would just open it up again.
The public hearing should be reopened and you should schedule it for the next meeting, because there will be new information presented.
Okay, you want me to reopen it right now or?
Yeah, that way we don't have to do the the legal notice again.
Alright, so I'm gonna make a motion to reopen the public hearing. Alright, second by Chris, all in favor? Alright, six in favor, zero opposed, alright, and I'll make a motion to table the project until the December meeting. At five forty-ish and give you a chance to resubmit new plans. Alright, motion second by Manny, all in favor? Alright, six in favor, zero opposed, alright, we'll see you back in December.
Very much.
Thank you. Alright, so our next public hearing is gonna be for the applicant Kearney Realty and Development Group. Project address is one sixty-two, one eighty and one eighty-four to one eighty-six Henry Street and seventy-seven Pine Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the construction of a mixed-use building with sixty-five dwelling units. And four thousand three hundred square feet of commercial space and one ancillary parking area in the C four neighborhood Commercial District and R two, one and two unit dwelling district. And Mario has something to say.
Okay, since the dapper young man sitting in front of us is my nephew, I'm gonna, what's that? I'm gonna recuse myself from this, from this discussion.
Thank you, alright.
Nick, I just wanna point out that there are restrooms behind that wall, I know we've been here for a while, the restrooms are behind that wall if anyone needs the restroom.
Alright. Alright, welcome back, Dominic.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm just gonna, not gonna start over, I think everybody was here at the last meeting, but I do wanna highlight the changes, most of which were, you know, discussed. Proactively a month ago. So first, before I forget, the two twenty-nine Port Street parcel was removed from the application, only because it was. Ended up not being available from the city. So that costs us eleven parking spaces, however, and while we're on that topic of parking, we do have a. I'll call it a memo of understanding right now between Carney and the Rumble Ponies. For the long-term lease of thirty spaces in the Rumble Pony block.
How many?
Thirty.
Three, zero.
Three, zero, plus we still have the ten on Henry Street at the one. One sixty-two Henry. Think it's one sixty-two Henry down the street that was part of the original application, we sold those tents, we have a total of forty off-street parking spaces. We did get our, the required area variances were granted last week by the zoning board. Garbage was a big concern both here and at the zoning board, so in the new materials we submitted, you'll see on the floor plan. About. Not about what exactly in this area, the building and the first level, the first residential level, you'll see an interior garbage space. And we added the retaining wall and exit. On the east side of the building with a walkway north out to Henry Street, so we know that the garbage on pine, you know, was a big concern. A bolt board and some of the public comment that was made, so we went back to the drawing board and found a way to. One store inside, but two, it's gonna be taken out to Henry Street and not to pine. Then the other major thing that was talked about here and at the zoning board was the solar study and the effect of our proposed construction. On eighty-one Pine Street, which is two doors down to the east. We submitted a summary and and report of our findings based on a shade study we did. And I will get into the details, but basically I found that the combination of removing the trees required for the new building construction. In the in the building, the construction of the new building, while it may shade those panels some. There's a net positive effect of the project on Mr. Leonard, Mr. Leonard Solar Panel. And then the only other change is in addition to the interior bike rack, the, I'm sorry, bicycle storage room. On the first floor of the building, we did add three. Bike rack stations along Henry and one on pine. Henry, you know, we thought it was a good idea and agreed with the board and the staff that, you know, the commercial space. You know, having some exterior spots, landing spots for bicycles, it's a good thing, so those have been added. Other than that, I'll take any questions and. Open there.
Alright, thank you. Any questions before we open a public hearing?
That's much, well, I guess a question, I guess, I mean, thank you for working with the rubble ponies. That memo, you can that be uploaded and sent to the planning, maybe it was and I missed it.
Yeah, it's on Basecamp.
Okay, so.
And it right now, it's we I basically forwarded you the email correspondence between Carney and the Rumble Pony. All intents and that'll be formalized into a lease agreement of some sort when the time comes.
Okay.
Okay, according to the email correspondence back and forth, that's thirty spaces for fifteen years.
Yeah.
What happens after fifteen years?
So the way the zoning board. The intent is that they would maintain the thirty spaces in some fact, they had to start somewhere in about fifteen years with a long enough lease. As you can see in the correspondence provided, it's being paid for upfront, it's significant cost, so. But we've also talked about as other parcels may become available in the in the area, there may be opportunity to, you know. Obtain additional parcel, obtain additional parcels and provide additional parking that they directly control. At which point, I think the way the variance is. Gonna be written is any additional spaces we're able to provide between now and fifteen years from now, that total can be deducted, bottom line is we wanna maintain forty spaces.
Alright, not to go super deep into this, but just a layman's description of how you do a shade study.
So it's essentially a. Three D computer program. You put in your different sizes and shapes, we have a building at such and such a height with a root slope that. You know, nine twelve or whatever it was. And you can see in the materials provided, we did it once with. Actually, a kind of a conservative tree canopy compared to what's actually there. At some assumed height for those trees, we were conservative on that as well. We didn't, I didn't climb them, climb them with a tape measure, but just just looking off Google Earth. And we have a pictometry program as well where we can measure some things off aerial imagery. You know, we got a conservative. Tree canopy height, so we put that in that mass in and and we had the model run for a year and it basically tells, you know, what what is the. Output of the panels at their location with with these obstructions. And then we ran it again with those trees removed, with the building inserted, the new building inserted, and it tells us. That it basically was the difference, so. We don't have the specifics on on Mr. Leonard's panels, so we couldn't say, you know, we. I can't give you a number on the the energy production. But we're able to give a accurate number on the solar access of the site, so. Currently, it's eighty-six percent, eighty-six point four percent. And after the removal of the trees, construction of the building will be at ninety-six point two percent. And a lot, a lot comes into play there. For instance, a lot of the time that our building will be shading those panels will be in the evening. When the sun's very low. Particularly in the summer. So. While they may have sun on them, there it's not at the greatest angle to get the best efficiency out of production of those panels. Does that answer your question?
Yep. A good clarification, alright, any other questions before we open public hearing? Alright, so let's open the public hearing and see if anybody's here to talk about the project. So this is the public hearing for Kearney Realty and Development Group, the project address is one sixty-two. One eighty and one eighty-four to one eighty-six Henry Street as well as seventy-seven Pine Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the construction of a mixed-use building with sixty-five dwelling units and four thousand three hundred square feet of commercial space. And one ancillary parking area in the C four neighborhood Commercial District and R two, one and two unit dwelling district. Alright, if there's anybody who would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone. Alright. Looks like nobody's here to speak about your project, Dominic. Alright, in that case, we'll close the public hearing for this project. Any last questions, comments, concerns? Chris? Alright. Motion to close the public hearing. Alright, all in favor? Alright, five in favor, zero opposed. Alright, so. We determined this was a secret unlisted action. And so I will make a motion for a negative declaration under seeker based on the following. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? No, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land, no or small impact? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community, no or small impact? Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area, no? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway? No or small impact, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities, no? Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment utilities, no? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No or small impact, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, no or small impact? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? No, and will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No, so based on all of those, I'll make a motion for a negative declaration. Seconded by Joe, all in favor? Seconded by Joe, all in favor? All right, five in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion that the requirements for site plan review and special use permit have been met. All right, second by Chris, all in favor? All right, five in favor, zero opposed. All right. When does construction start? All right. Excellent, good luck. Thanks. All right. We thought it would never happen, but we're to our last public hearing and final deliberation. This is for the applicant United Group Pike Development Joint Venture. Project address is one eighty-three Water Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the construction of a ten-story building with a five hundred and forty-nine-vehicle public parking garage and one hundred and twenty upper-story dwelling units in the C two downtown business district. Welcome back.
Hello, everyone. I am Jacob Von Mecco of Wyndham Planning and Design. I live at one six one one East Shore Drive, Ithaca, New York. And I am joined by Mike Guestwick. Who can give his address? Yeah, sorry, he's had to grab my pen there. Mike Guestwick with Pike Development. Twenty Loudonville Road, Albany, New York.
All right.
So I don't know if everyone was here for the previous presentation, but we did present this at last month's meeting. And so there have been some minor changes to the project. Although they may seem significant from the exterior. I did bring a series of hard copy presentations for, that are basically the exact same presentation we gave last month. I can pass those out if the board would like to see those and we can go through them again. Or maybe we could just field questions directly.
Okay. All right, any questions? Before we do the public hearing? This one seems very uncontroversial. There was one, I think, last meeting, maybe you answered it, but. Did you already have your variances approved last meeting or did you get them between last meeting and this meeting?
So the variances have not been approved. We are on the BZI schedule for December sixth, I believe. Or, sorry, is that the, the fifth or the sixth?
It's an early December, but as far as the procedure. Because this is a type one action and it's coordinated review. The planning commission at this point. Would be able to vote on seeker. However, a final decision should be tabled. Until after the ZBA makes their decision. And they haven't been able to make a decision. Because seeker hasn't been done by you all, so.
Okay.
Sort of a chicken and egg thing.
All right. So we'll do seeker, but we won't approve the site plan.
The other thing I want to point out is we did get. Sort of preliminary county comments. It, it was a long list of comments. But the gist of it was that, in their opinion. The planning commission should hold off on making a final decision, which again, you can't do tonight anyway. Without a traffic impact study and documentation that. The design conforms to the city's historic design guidelines. I do want to point out that COD does have to review this design, and so they'll have to. Document that to COD that they're, that they're meeting, that they're conforming with the guidelines. As far as the traffic impact study. That's a recommendation from the county. Because they anticipate over a hundred trips per day to this one location. And that's sort of a threshold that they go by. But again, that, that's a recommendation the planning commission. Can or can or may not choose to. To ask for that information.
Okay. This is a reminder, how many parking spaces are in the existing garage?
I believe the existing garage had about six hundred.
And you're providing.
Approximately five hundred.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, well, let's do this. Let's open the public hearing and then. See if anybody's here to speak about the project. Oh, Chris?
A procedural question for Sharon, Tito. Given that we can't make a file deliberation tonight based on what you just described, should we? Close the public hearing or should we be tabling it to then possibly reopen? Next month when these other things come in?
If you plan on concluding seeker tonight, then you should close the public hearing and then, and then do seeker.
All right. All right, so this is the public hearing for the applicant United Group slash Pike Development Joint Venture. Project address is one eighty-three Water Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the construction of a ten-story building with a five hundred and forty-nine-vehicle public parking garage and one hundred and twenty upper-story dwelling units in the C two downtown business district. If there's anybody who would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone. This is your chance. You could even talk about nonsensical stuff. It doesn't even have to be about the project. Just. Come up and keep us entertained for five minutes. Or not. All right, seeing nobody, we'll close the public hearing. All right. Tito, so the staff comments was the proposed project requires review by the traffic board. That's, that's our traffic board? Who is the traffic?
New curb openings have to be approved by the traffic board.
Oh. Okay, so they're not doing a traffic study of any sort. They're just looking at technical.
Yeah, when, when there's a new curb opening, the city has to amend the, the city's traffic code, and so it has to go to the traffic board for that purpose. The traffic board likes to have. The planning commission's decisions on hand when they're making a decision, so. I don't think you necessarily have to rely on the traffic board.
Okay. All right. Any last questions, comments, concerns? All right. All right, so this was a type one action under seeker. So. We have a slightly different checklist. I'll make a motion. For a negative declaration under seeker based on the following. Number one, impact on land. Proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. Yes, but it'll have a. No or small impact. Impact on geological features. The proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site. No. Impacts on surface water. The proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies. No or small impact. Impact on groundwater. The proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater or have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or an aquifer. No. Impact on flooding. The proposed action may result in development on lands subject to flooding. I assume that this site is subject to flooding or was flooded. Previously.
I believe it's in the. Five hundred year floodplain.
Okay. So the answer to that is yes, but this has no or small impact. On that. Impact on air. The proposed action may include a state-regulated air emission source. No. Impact, impact on plants and animals. The proposed action may result in a loss of flora or fauna. No or small impact. Impact on agricultural resources. The proposed action may impact agricultural resources. No. Impact on aesthetic resources. The land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. No. Impact on historic or archaeological resources. The proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archaeological resource. Yes, but it has a no or small impact on that resource.
Nick, is that because it'll be reviewed by COD?
Yes. Impact on open space and recreation. The proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or a reduction of an open space resource as designated in an adopted municipal open space plan. No. Impact on critical environmental areas. The proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area. No. Impact on transportation. The proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems. No or small impact.
That's checked off. No on the staff report, but that, that should probably be discussed a little bit.
Okay. The proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems, so. Yes, but it will. Does anybody disagree that it'll have minimal impact? No or minimal impact? Or do you want to talk about that? All right, looks like everyone's okay with that.
I do just want to point out that this is a parking garage where a parking garage previously existed, and this will have less cars than the previous garage did, so. I'm sure that is something that you weighed in. In making your determination.
I almost said the exact same thing before you popped on the microphone. All right, impact on energy. The proposed action may result in an increase in the use of any form of energy. No or small impact. Impact on noise, odor, and light. The proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting. Potentially with outdoor lighting, but it'll have no or minimal impact because it's basically replacing the exact same use with the new use. Impact on human health. The proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. No. Consistency with community plans. The proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans. I would say the proposed action. Is consistent with adopted land use plans, so there's no or small impact. And consistency with community character. The proposed action is inconsistent with the existing community character. So I'd say, yes, it is in, it is consistent with existing community character. All right, so based on those items, I make a motion for a negative declaration under seeker. Yes, Joe. Yeah.
The existing parking garage that was there. Had. Collection system for when snow melted, taking all the water from the sewer system. Are you going for like a lead certification or what are you gonna do with the roof? Water, is that going into the sewer system or are you gonna? Because that, that's something that would be in a benefit. It was not all going back the same way.
So I'd say roughly two-thirds of the parking garage is actually going to be covered. By the apartment building that's on top of it, so there's only a small part of the garage that. Will be exposed to, to snow collection. So there's no plan for a, a snow melt system. The snow would be managed. In coordination with the city and, you know, stockpiled as. Appropriate, but all the runoff would be. Similar to the old structure. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And answer.
All right. All right, so. Negative declaration for seeker. For a second, second by Manny, all in favor? All right, that's six in favor, zero opposed. And we've been advised not to rule on the site plan review or special use permit until after the zoning board has made their decision, so. Make a motion unless anybody has anything else they want to add. All right, I'll make a motion to table the project. Until the next meeting. All right. Second by Chris, all in favor? All right, six in favor, zero opposed. All right.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, that's everything on the agenda except for other business. Not to keep us here too long, but Tito, what is going on with the? Car repair shop as you're coming into Binghamton on Front Street? We approved their plan. And we've sent them multiple reminders that they're not supposed to be storing those big wreckers out on the corner. And it's, you can't get any more wreckers on that corner right now of how many are stored there.
They're in violation. And we're in the process of. Sort of building a case against them.
Okay.
But. Yeah, they're in violation of their site plan.
Okay.
On both sites.
Oh.
Both of the parcels that they own there. Are you, are you referring to the towing business?
Yes.
Yeah.
What's the name of the company?
You, you save auto.
That's right, yeah, you say, yep. All right. All right. Any other new business? Other business? Anything they want to talk about? All right. All right, motion by Paul to adjourn. Seconded by everyone, all in favor? All right, six in favor, zero opposed. Thank you.